Okay councillors, please stand. Okay, welcome councillors, members of the executive and members of the public joining in. I'll be on livestream or on replay. Swan Hill Rural City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders past and present. The previous councillor Johnson.
We recite you Lord that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Thank you. Please sit, councillors. Mr McLeven, we do not have any apologies today.
There are all councillors present, Mr Mayor.
Any declarations of conflict of any interest? There being none, we'll move on. The section B reports. Item B 20.38, receive and hear submissions to the proposed 2021 budget. Mr Leighton.
Thank you Mayor. This is part of the statutory process as we move towards adopting the 2021 council budget. We advertised for submissions and at the close of the submission period, we received six submissions. One of those submitters has requested to address council and they are here tonight, they were here today, to speak in support of their submission. This report is really just to enable council to receive and formally hear those submissions. A consideration of the submissions will be at the special council meeting scheduled for next Tuesday and then at the council meeting on the 21st of July is when we look to adopt the budget. So today is fairly procedural process, it's really about receiving and hearing the submissions, Mr Leighton.
Thank you, Mr Leighton. Questions councillors?
I just moved a motion, Mr Mayor, I just put a written motion.
Motion, second up. Councillor Johnson, does this speak to the motion?
No, it's procedural.
Procedure, okay, right, we move to vote, all those in favour? Passed unanimously, thank you. We now wish to suspend standing orders.
Motion to suspend standing orders, so you can hear this submitted.
And the second up, thank you, one fiver, thank you.
Who's the second up, sir?
Yeah, councillor Johnson. Welcome Bill, Mr Andy Miller, the floor is yours.
Thank you Mr Mayor for the opportunity to present our submission on the draft budget for the Save Swan Hill Surrender the Action Group. We are principally interested in the areas of the budget pertaining to the aerodrome. Firstly, could I draw your attention to the local government better practice guide, model budget 2020/21 in relation to capital works programme? And I quote, 'It recommended that a narrative including details of major projects that are of interest to the user of the budget be included.' In the budget, we particularly note the following budget lines or items. 4.1.4 Grants, capital grants, non-recurring state government aerodrome, 900,000 capital works programme, Swan Hill aerodrome refurbishments, 450,000, Swan Hill aerodrome lighting and runway reconstruction, 1.885 million, Swan Hill aerodrome renewal works, 445,000, totalling 3.680 million. This is the significant amount being budgeted in the 2020/21 year. Plus, there has been a recent announcement of a further grant for additional 1.2 million. It would also appear in the statement of the capital works in the budget that the actual funding for works in 2020 was approximately 50% from grants and 50% from council's resources and cash. While in the budget for 2021, the grant funding has dropped to approximately a third and the council cash has gone up to two thirds. This would appear disturbing. In our view, it appears all of a sudden the aerodrome has taken off. It appeared to be a circling duck floating along the surface, providing services and functions to a variety of users. Underneath, there appears to be a lot of paddling or possibly propelling and manoeuvring going on. It was noted at recent council meetings, which I'll be watching the video links for, that a certain amount of angst and concern being shown by the community in relation to the aerodrome. We also noted that the additional funding of 1.2 million dollars is to make us, the council or the community, more resilient. It's also noted that the previous negotiations with the pilot training facility had been going on for over a year, during which time an unspecified heads of agreement was being negotiated, potential lease arrangements, rates and charges were being discussed, without any community consultation or public submission. It also appeared that one councillor indicated that the heads of agreement was designed to stop misinformation going to the community. We suggest putting these community and public issues at the wrong end of the process has caused the angst and concern amongst the community that councillors have noticed. Also from council meeting videos, it appears that councillors have indicated that perhaps the future of the aerodrome should be best handled by the next council. We understand there's no committee of management in the Swan Hill aerodrome and from the budget there appears to be ten hangar leases, a workshop lease, a site lease for the weather station and a cropping lease. There is also a richly misunderstood, misunderstood thing, the payment concession charge based on the weight of the aircraft. We note, and we have provided details from the Australian standards catalogue, that there is a need for an airport master plan to forecast the development of the airport, including the impact of noise. Such a plan is the dual function of guiding an airport owner's business decisions and informing the users and the community. It is suggested that a master plan have four fundamental sections covering business, operations, community and environment. We ask... We ask the councillors, they are now dealing with 3.68 million dollars in the budget, plus a third further, 1.2 million dollars of resilience funding, whether there is an airport master plan for the Swan Hill aerodrome. If so, did the workshop with the aviation projects which we have referred to and attached produce an appropriate public document? And did it involve any communicom, any community consultation? In a recent interview on the ABC, the CEO indicated that works have been budgeted, but the situation is now fluid as the flight training school negotiations have at that stage been suspended. The funds were still available, council were committed to improving the aerodrome and monitoring changing circumstances while never closing the door on future discussions. As such, would council consider, especially in light of the current fluent situation, a proposal to develop an airport master plan to link the improvements to the changing circumstances? We continue to be committed to the future of the aerodrome. It's an essential community asset providing a vital plank in the region's health service, emergency response and postal service. We believe it should always be owned by the community and represented by the council. We are concerned that a change in ownership may be being considered as a possibility. We understand the opportunities that can be canvassed for the aerodrome, improvements of increased traffic, commercial and private via freight, tourism and projects. We want the aerodrome to continue to be an asset of the community and to be managed in a manner reflecting due diligence and community consultation. In conclusion, Mr Mayor, may I quote from the classic Australian movie, which does bear some resemblance to our current situation? The movie called The Castle. Where Guinness Donato was summing up the case in the High Court. He claimed, 'It's the constitution, it's Mabo, it's justice, it's law, it's the law.' Well, perhaps the first four aren't relevant, but on this issue, council have got the point all wrong.
Thank you, Mr Miller.
That's it?
Thank you.
That's it?
They thought Mr Miller from the yard in the building.
Glad to see the names were still there even though the reward notices have been taken out.
Welcome back to the chamber, Mr Miller too, by the way. I'm moving a motion to, presumably standing on the... Thank you, the second up, thank you councillor Johnson, all those in favour? Thank you. Item B 20.39, council plan 2017/21, 2019/20 review, hear and consider submissions. Mr Leighton, please.
Thank you Mayor. Yes, this is another item where we've obviously received some submissions that relates to the review of the council plan. So this isn't the full development of the new council plan, this is the annual review of the plan. So as such, it really only relates to the last year of the council plan. And a lot of the initiatives and actions etcetera that were in the plan are either in progress or already completed. We advertised for submissions as we required to do and at the close of submissions, we've received two submissions and the contents of those two submissions are summarised in the report. Originally, one of the submitters had requested to address the council, however, they have subsequently withdrawn that request to speak. So there is no speakers to the submissions, Mr Mayor. An officer's response is included to the points raised in the submission. The second submission essentially supports the council plan anyway. The first submission contained a lot of detail, in some cases observations, sometimes questions. As a result of the first submission, we have made a couple of minor changes to where we could include technical references to the papers and if there was some expedates we could put in. However, the actual submissions didn't go to the heart of the council plan issues and actions itself. So therefore, we're not recommending any changes to the initiatives and actions. The plan that we advertised did include one or two changes to the actions as a result of the council input, but that included things around the planning scheme. I think council and the committee have requested that we include a specific action in relation to review of the MSS and the rural area strategy, I think it was. So that has been included in the revised document. Mr Mayor, having responded to the submissions, the council staff believe that the document is now presented, is ready for adoption as the reviewed council plan for the last year, effectively 2017 to 2021, but effective in the 2020/21 year, there's a series of recommendations to achieve that aim included with the report.
Thank you, questions councillors? No questions, can I have a move please?
I'll move, I'll further recommend options, Mr Mayor.
And the second up, councillor Benham. Do you wish to speak, councillor Jeffrey?
Nah, go ahead, go ahead. Obviously, the feedback provided from the community is welcome. Some of it could be taken aboard for the next council and the next floor of the council plan. Yeah, just continuing to encourage the community to have a say. Thank you.
Mr Benham?
Feedback's always valuable to offer a wider perspective and it's appreciated that people take the time to read the plan.
Thank you, we've got a speaker for. Any against? There are none, there is no electoral vote, that's all in favour. Passed unanimously, thank you.
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Leighton. Item B 20.40, Air Place project, site location. Mr En, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just as a quick run through of the things that council has heard in previous reports and at special briefing sessions in relation to this project. Just go back to some first principles and talk about the grant that we received for this project. The purpose of the regional growth fund was to provide funds for major transformational projects that support long-term economic growth. Its aims were to create jobs, drive economic growth and build stronger regional communities. The minimum ask of this grant is 10 million dollars, which is a big project for us to have to fund. Council looked to adjoining councils to get other projects that support this aim, this aim of building stronger regional communities. And we got six other councils, so seven councils across two states to do coordinated projects, largely along rivers and largely to boost the tourism economy. What it asked of council was to be agile and look at our strategies and combine proposals from a variety of strategies and documents that council had to pull together a proposal that would meet the aims of the grant, as well as meet many aims that council had in its council plan, in its major projects, tenure plan, as well as in the riverfront master plan here in Swan Hill. And council was responsive to that and looked at taking projects from those lists of projects and combining them into one. Council and therefore rate payers contribute significant funds to operate the Pioneer Settlement, the art gallery and visitor services. And government funds are usually only available for building infrastructure, not for operational funds. So council has asked staff to look at ways we can reduce those operational costs. And one way of reducing operational costs is to combine the location of services to minimise things as simple as heating and cooling, as well as fronting house staff. Those components that make up this proposed development, including the art gallery, entry to the settlement, the visitor services and the Aboriginal component, have been in council's documents coming in years. The art gallery, over 10 years, the entry to the settlement, about 10 years and an Aboriginal cultural space, at least seven years, probably longer. Visitor services, as council is aware, is located in a building that is leased by council and has decreasing numbers of people using it as a service as things change within the tourism industry. Council has carried out, as I've mentioned, significant strategic work, the riverfront master plan. Key aims were to open up the river, increase and improve tourism offerings. Feasibility studies around an interpretive centre, which stated that it financially couldn't stack up as a long business, economically and financially. Not that it wasn't wanted or desired by the community, but that council couldn't fund it into the long term without co-locating. Council looked at five sites for a co-located facility and all those sites were reduced to two sites that council then looked at with some plans to get architects to do some plans for two sites. And those two sites were the existing art gallery and the Pioneer Settlement site. I had briefly talked about why the co-location and that was around reducing costs and creating efficiencies for council and therefore the community. But it is also about creating a single point of entry for our tourists coming to town where they can seek advice about the offerings that council has, whether that be Pioneer Settlement, Heartbeat, something on at the town hall or an exhibition at the art gallery. But also to divert people to Lake Bogar, to Robbenberg, to Manangatang, a load of other places within the municipality that visitors want to visit. We know that more people attend the Pioneer Settlement than attend the visitor information centre. So the Pioneer Settlement is the drawcard to visitation to the region. We get them all in one hit, we can be selling tickets to a variety of attractions in the one location and paying someone three or four days' stay rather than a one or two days' stay. Importantly, the Air Place project does allow the Aboriginal community to develop product and start small with the support of council and all the other services that are provided within Air Place. Both locations proposed are very close to Pentle Island and Pentle Island is a very significant site and place to the Aboriginal community. It will allow for development over time and it would be a great position for council to be in in five years if there is not enough space for the Aboriginal tourism, creative work that is being done at Air Place, that we need a new site, what a great position to be in. Community consultation, engagement with the community is a really difficult thing to do and to get traction, particularly a very broad community like a town the size of Swan Hill and the surrounding region. Look, with hindsight, of course, we could have done a better job and I would say that about every project we do. We could have always done a better job with community engagement. With the grant this big and with the tight timelines, it was difficult. But what has resulted is clearly we have a very passionate community here, want the best for Swan Hill and the municipality and their enthusiasm is clearly to be congratulated. No matter what decision council makes, it would be fantastic to have the whole Swan Hill community behind the future of the settlement, behind the future of the Aboriginal community and behind the visitor economy. Many of the submissions, letters and emails etcetera spoke from the heart. People who've been part of the establishment of the settlement primarily, all their families and there's certainly a lot of emotion tied up with their views. Council's role is to juggle that emotional tie that people have to the settlement as it was, rather than as it is, because there's certainly been change over time with Heartbeat of the Murray establishing some five years ago and other changes at the settlement, the ramping up of the commercial use of the Lower Murray, for instance. We certainly need more space for the art gallery, it needs to grow and develop and attract more travelling exhibitions. And visitor services needs to establish a new place in the tourism economy and Air Place provides that location. Briefly, I wanted to go through the pros and cons of both sites. And option one, which is the one inside the Pioneer Settlement, it certainly opens up the riverfront location and creates some free access to more of the, for the general public to more of the river. It's a large site and it does accommodate for landscaping aspirations that can be optimised for both outdoor casual usage and events. Certainly something the Aboriginal community was keen to have. The impact on native vegetation is likely to be minimal, although several planted trees would be required to be removed. It does however reduce the area of Pioneer Settlement proper and I know councillors have expressed concern about the reduced route for the horse and carriage and the old car. The locomotive and the windmill would be required to be relocated. The rotunda and the rose garden will need to be removed. The new entry point to Pioneer Settlement will be closer to the main attractions, that's Pia and Heartbeat of the Murray and of course the main street of the settlement. It does separate the gem from the Pioneer Settlement attractions and will require security of the gem, but it also allows for separately paid tours of the gem outside visiting the settlement. Aesthetics of a modern building will contrast with the PS gem. There'll be site disruption to the settlement and the street access to the, there will be street access to the building from Monash Drive which leads to car parking. That site allows the upgraded car park on Monash Drive to provide direct access to the entry to all of those facilities. Spoon's Riverside building would be retained and a quality precinct combined with the old art gallery building provides certainly opportunity along with the lodges for further redevelopment of that general area. There's no cafe or restaurant in the proposed site one and it does provide an opportunity for Spoon's Riverside to thrive further and it also allows for the cafe within the settlement to thrive as well. And whilst there's been concern about having a modern building within the settlement, it does create a juxtaposition of architecture between the Pioneer Settlement, which is largely colonial Victorian and federation era buildings with the modern area of the 2020s. And there's certainly concern and support for that. Option two, outside the Pioneer Settlement, largely on the site of Spoon's Restaurant, has great vistas and very close to the riverfront. There is restricted landscaping opportunity around the building to provide that public usage, you know, to go and get your tickets to the Pioneer Settlement or whatever for the next day, grab a bite to eat and sit outside, that's, or bring your own picnic, that opportunity is limited. Vegetation offsets will be required to open up the riverfront view to facilitate the view of the river down towards the Pia and Heartbeat. There will be minimal if any direct impact on Pioneer Settlement, its artefacts and architecture, including the locomotive, the windmill, the rose garden and the rotunda. It is a greater distance for people to travel between the entry and other interests at the Pioneer Settlement site. It does retain that current route for the vintage vehicle and horse and car. Access to Pentle Island will be more difficult because it is still through Pioneer Settlement rather than being accessible without going through Pioneer Settlement. Does incorporate a new cafe and restaurant and that may compromise development opportunities for the other four key services because of the need to fund a new cafe within that building. It does have impressive visual opportunity, a vehicles approach from the Murray Valley Highway, you certainly will see the building. Access to the current art gallery and lodges will need to be managed. Car parking is of a bit of concern with the ability for buses and long vehicles to drop off passengers at the front door and turn around. Certainly not as easy as along Monash Drive. Certainly there would still be opportunities for those vehicles to park on Monash Drive with a walk from there to the entry to this building. You have this list, I was really just pulling out the main ones and car parking is listed there. So in summary, I won't go through the rest of those, you have all of those in your report and you have had many reports on the pros and cons of each side. I guess my job and all the jobs of the stakeholders, whether it be management at Pioneer Settlement, the director of the art gallery, our visitor services staff and our representative group, the Wondara Action Committee, our role is to give you the best professional advice that we can. And we try and weigh up the tradition of the Pioneer Settlement and the views of many of the community with the clear direction of those involved in the visitor economy, about the need for more product to feature within the Pioneer Settlement, to expand the usage of the art gallery, to provide a visitor with a one-stop shop to enable them to partake in everything the Swan Hill municipality and surrounds has to offer, to keep them here that one night or that one extra night. Significant impact on the economy of the municipality. And one thing I would finally add... And one thing I would finally add is the connection with the Aboriginal community that's been created by this project and it has been fantastic to see many members of the Aboriginal community, certainly not supporting one side or another, but supporting and being excited about the opportunity that this proposal gives for jobs and culture for the local community. So the recommendation, based on weighing up all those considerations, is that council proceed with Site One and proceed to prepare the detailed plans and I can't read it from here, to do the detailed design development and construction of Our Place building in Site One inside the Pioneer Settlement to the north of the PS Gem.
Thank you, Ms Green. Questions, councillors? Do you have a question? Yes, let's.
In the report, Ms Green, you say that the preliminary cost has been done and it's over budget. Well, see, how come, where do we go from here?
I have a statement from our architect, which I'm happy to read, which I will read first and then just add. Further, this is from Gerry Brandrick, the architect, "Further to our recent attendance to speak with council, we confirm that the initial costings prepared by quantity surveyors and zinc cost planners are based on extremely conceptual drawings and as such they are inflated to allow for the unknown detail. Items that will impact on the final design and therefore price are footing, site preparation, internal fit-out and finalised areas for the internal components, that is about the size basically, and the spaces and how that will work. We and council's appointed building contractors Nicholson's agree that there is sufficient allowance to work within the budget set by council. This applies to both options." So that's a statement from the architect. The plans we gave for quantity surveyors are concepts. It's almost, you know, thumbnail to guitar, not quite, but very hard to give very clear.
Thanks, Ms Green. Any questions, Mr Mayor?
With the funding, I understand we've done it on a regional basis with a number of other councils, what happens if we do not go ahead with either site? There's a couple parts to this question. If we don't go ahead with either site, what happens to the funding? What impact does that have on other councils that have got funding through this, Air Rivers Air Region? And how does it impact our reputation as a council with the federal government?
If the proposal is not to proceed with anything, so not even another site, then clearly we would need to give, well, we haven't got money, we wouldn't receive the money. We've already spent some of the grant in doing the design work. So we would lose that money. I'm thinking, I'd need to look at the agreement, I'm not sure that it would impact on, you know, we need to make a new agreement with the funding body excluding that part of the proposal. What was the second part?
The impact on the other councils involved in this, in our region?
I'm not thinking it would be...
Each council's contribution was quarantined and should not have any impact on the others' service. Matching funds from each council for their projects, sorry, matching funds for each council's projects came from that council. There's no cross subsidisation.
Just said any impact might be on cash flow, depending on what changes we've negotiated. None of the councils, including ourselves, did the final payment until all of the projects are done. So that would mean if we, if we agree, depending how it's varied, we couldn't complete our project, we'd have to wait until we get clearance on all the projects before they get their final 2%. So that potentially might create a situation where we have to advance the money to the other councils out of council funds and then wait to get their money back unless their cash flow could be under the effect.
In terms of reputational risk, I think it's a large risk. This is probably our largest grant that we would get. And I'll look for John and David, perhaps every 10, 15 years we would get a grant of this size. It's not an annual sort of grant. So it doesn't look good.
Have a question, councillor?
Sorry, just to clarify, it doesn't look good to need an extension or?
No, 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 no. If we were to say we're not proceeding with the proposal and therefore not saying we don't want $5 million.
Yes, yeah. May I ask a question? In 2017 feasibility study, it says that because of its strong heritage-based focus, it would not be strategic to co-locate the Pioneer Settlement with the Murray River Interpretive Centre, which needs to have a much wider focus beyond history. So the recommendation was not to co-locate the two centres, but council proceeded and asked for another assessment and asked to co-locate at the Pioneer Settlement. Does anyone in this room know why they went against strategic advice?
Yeah, I can answer that. The interpretive centre that was proposed at the time was a much broader scoped interpretive centre, not just Aboriginal, but far more broader than that. And it was that that was said shouldn't co-locate the Pioneer Settlement. So that's why this proposal is a much smaller scale Aboriginal component, which is largely around the creative arts and more aligned with what's happening at the settlement and building on the Aboriginal program at the settlement. So it's not the same proposal as...
However...
Sorry, just to add to what Ms Green said, my understanding is that it's a further work and established that at this stage, if a cultural centre wouldn't be viable in its own right as a standalone location, it needs to give it time to develop, otherwise we would be building an absolute white elephant if we went for a separate cultural centre. I believe there was a study which confirmed that fact after the 2017 study.
Yes, councillor.
Just, I would clarify that, it does recommend co-locating with an art gallery as the most viable proposition and no one ever spoke of a standalone centre after that point. It was recommended to have a co-located art gallery with a cultural centre component, which is, it sounds like a great mix to me, a great cross-funding, saving and all those other things you spoke about, locating and receptionists, so on, and would have had great long-term viability, I believe, for both centres. But what is said and stated here in this strategic advice is what has happened, is that one portion of this project is being diluted.
Point of order, Miss Mayor. Is there a question or is this debate?
Sorry. Fair enough. Okay. I accept, my apologies.
Do you have a question?
Oh, I still feel that what has happened is that one component's been diluted and I don't accept that standalone facility was recommended. So I guess I'm just clarifying, I disagree and that is debate.
Thank you, councillor. Any further questions? I have a question. Cultural heritage management plan, Ms Green, have we applied for one? Do we need one?
We have a cultural heritage management plan that covers all of our riverfront development and that was done at the time of the riverfront masterplan.
So it applies to this and there's no need to revisit that, so we've got that in place.
It gives clear guidance on what we can and can't do.
Okay, thank you. Yes, councillor.
I don't have a question, Mr Mayor, I do have a motion to move. There are no more questions.
You're foreshadowing a motion then?
I am foreshadowing a motion. Mr Mayor.
Yes, councillor P.
During this whole process, the terminology incubator has been used for the Aboriginal cultural heritage part of this building. What are you talking about when we refer to it as an incubator?
So if that word has been used or a startup, all those sorts of words have been used to allow, to enable the Aboriginal community to establish whatever it is that they would like to do in the longer term, to enrich their cultural heritage, but also to create jobs for our Aboriginal community. So whether it be tourism, tours of the Bush Tucker Gardens, information about art and basket weaving, music, all of those sorts of things, to enable them to have a space, a safe space, supported by council, supported by the art gallery, supported by other services within a building, to enable them to look at business development soon to our local Aboriginal community.
And one last question, Mr Mayor. Just to clarify, Ms Green, I believe in the surveys from the Aboriginal community, a lot of the comments come back about connection to Pentle Island.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillors? No further questions, you have a motion to put to us, councillor Benham?
I would like to move a motion, Mr Mayor. It's a four-point motion and I have it written here.
I can read it out?
To be passed down, I'll read it out for you. Point one, adopt Site Option One as the future site for the new Our Place building. Site Option One is located inside the Pioneer Settlement proper and to the north of the Gem, revisiting the amount of space allocated for the Aboriginal cultural space. Point two, that the Our Place project be built within the budgeted allocated funds of $10,946,040 unequivocally with no overspend. Point three, that the train and the windmill be retained within the Pioneer Settlement grounds and that the Pentle Island Bridge scoped for repair. Point four, that the community consultation period for the relocation of the train and the windmill be completed within four to six weeks and brought back to council at a special meeting of council in August 2020 or at the ordinary meeting of council in August 2020.
So a couple of chain differences in words there, Mr Mayor, what's on the screen? And also up in number three, I wonder if councillor Benham could please read that again?
After, yep, and the Pentle Island Bridge scoped for repair.
And dot point one? Oh, yes, you got that, that's complete? Yep, good. Is that correct, councillor?
It is correct, thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second to that motion? Yes, councillor Young, second. Do you respect the debate, councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. There's been many perspectives to consider when making this decision and that as councillors is our job, to listen to the emotion, the thoughts, the emails, the opinions of everyone who's willing to offer them to us and make a decision with the future of the municipality in mind. As council, we need to consider all of this, remove the emotion, consider the long-term strategic vision of this council and make a decision. If we can't do that, then we've no business in this chamber. Of course, I have considered all of the many emails, texts, letters and discussions I've had with many, many people who are residents still, former residents and regular tourists to our region and all which come from a different perspective. From the investment and business perspective, regional development and investment is more important now than ever. If we delay or reject this investment and interest in regional development, it will be a nail in the coffin, not only for the Pioneer Settlement, but the progress and development of Swan Hill. This opportunity won't present itself again, at least not in the immediate future. This project was identified by the federal government to have incredible merit, $10 million worth of merit, enough to gain a major federal government investment into our region. If we thumb our noses to that, we can expect the same return for the foreseeable future. From the tourism perspective, our visitor information centre has approximately 15,000 visitors per year. The Pioneer Settlement has around 80,000 visitors per year. Wouldn't it be nice if those 15,000 visitors, all of the visitor services, could immediately be converted into Pioneer Settlement visitors? All of a sudden, the Pioneer Settlement could be cost neutral rather than losing money each year. We save all of the overhead costs of running the V I C where it is right now, the art gallery, and all of a sudden, we have a brand new audience for all of these services. From the Aboriginal community perspective, option one allows the Aboriginal space and education space to flow to the riverbank and onto Pentle Island, which the Wondara Action Committee Working Group believe is a high priority. A letter that was received today from the WAC states that, and I quote, "The Swan Hill story currently starts with the colonial story, early settlement. It needs to start at the beginning, the dreaming. This is how we correct a wrong and Our Place will enable this to happen in a respectful way for the Aboriginal community. I agree and I thank the Wondara Action Committee for their consultation and their show of leadership and their passion coming together to submit this letter to council at the 11th hour." From the emotional perspective, council has been accused of not listening to residents and calling visitors and past residents irrelevant. This is completely untrue and in fact, quite the contrary. The opinions of Swan Hill alumni and visitors to our region are of vital importance and qualifying survey results based on connections to Swan Hill is of vital importance when making this decision. We have listened at length, we've taken phone calls, emails and put up with what only can be referred to as cyber bullying and we do this all in the interest of making the best decision for our municipality and the generational future of it. Do we want the Pioneer Settlement to remain? If the answer is yes, then this development can't be questioned. Do we want the access to new tourism markets, educational markets and audiences, not only for the Pioneer Settlement, but other attractions around the region by way of interaction with our visitor services staff and a new audience and bigger space for the art gallery? This model is now the international standard and don't we all want Swan Hill to rank on the international scale? I know I do and I know our kids will be grateful that we've had the courage to make hard decisions like these with a vision of the future at the forefront of our minds. And with that in mind and all things considered, the enthusiasm from the WAC Working Group, the Swan Hill Inc Board, the business community, families and children, I've listened to and sought out for opinions, thoughts and contemplation, it is in my opinion, option one, that will serve everyone best moving forward.
Thank you, councillor Benham.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My support is for Site Number One within Pioneer Settlement and is backed up by the following information. I just want to start by commending the people who have a passion for the settlement and who were involved in the early days of its inception and development, but also urge them to think about its long-term sustainability and endurance in years to come. When I was elected to council, the comments that I received were around, "We need the council and the councillors to encourage and support growth and development, but who are not afraid to make the hard decisions." The Pioneer Settlement is an important part of the history and landscape of Swan Hill and we need to ensure that it continues to be so. In 1994, I undertook a study programme through Melbourne University called Rural Development. As part of that programme, I chose to look at Swan Hill opportunities and barriers to growth and development and I focused on tourism and the Pioneer Settlement. I was given a very big, big box full of various consultant and other reports with recommendations that had been done over many years. It was particular of interest to me as I watched the Gem arrive on Swan Hill, the development of the settlement, the Queen's and other dignitaries' visits and the role of my father that he played in restoring the Gem and his artwork and signs that still exist at the settlement today. There were 200,000 people who visited the settlement during that early period. Since I undertook that programme, I now have another 15 reports sitting in my office with segments linking into the same areas and recommendations and this does not even include all of the recent reports. The themes that were repeated through the various reports and recommendations were that the Pioneer Settlement must change over time to maintain its survival and growth and that competition from other facilities and regions close to cities and towns would have a huge impact. This has proven to be true with emerging facilities within Victoria such as Sogran Hill, the Great Ocean Road and Warne Bull as good examples. A large percentage of the population now from all around Australia have visited the settlement, but people simply will not come back to see what they've seen before. Making change has been successful as Heartbeat of the Murray has increased visitor numbers. We now need to provide a new experience that integrates old and new and caters to a much larger market that attracts new visitors. Swan Hill is an amazing place with great things happening and we need to focus on that and we will grow even bigger and better. Our community needs to encourage and build on change, growth and development and not stifle opportunities that emerge. The consultation and input has been very extensive, sometimes very vocal and sometimes very quietly done, but now is the time to make the decision and move on.
Thank you, councillor Young. Any further speakers for the motion? Yes, councillor Johnson.
I'd like to speak to the motion, Mr Mayor. I think councillor Benham and councillor Young have covered most points, but just to back that up, statistics on tourism and potential are exactly that, there's statistics based on research, work of the experts, future trends, et cetera. And as councillor Benham alluded to, the Pioneer Settlement story currently starts with the colonial story, early settlement. And with the amount of feedback we've had from the Aboriginal community, it's clear that we should be starting from the dreaming time and this is how we're going to get it right. So by building Our Place, we'll enable that to happen in a really respectful way. The space is more than just a space, it's a great beginning for the next phase, opportunity to talk, share, work, educate, create, invest and grow. I see this facility as a stepping stone to a dedicated interpretive or business centre down the track, along with everything else that it will offer, where everyone is supported and great things will continue to happen and I think this is a really exciting future.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Any further speakers for the motion? Against the motion? Thank you, councillor MacFird.
And this whole process where...
This whole process of Our Place, it's created a lot of passion within the community. One thing of, we are in a democracy, and we've got to respect the views of all, where this decision goes and everyone's views. There's been a loud, people within the community putting a loud voice out there. We have been getting a lot of emails, a lot of I T and that type of thing in relation to support from outside the settlement. I've always been against putting it inside the settlement. I won't go into the history of the whole process. That was quite happily covered by Ms Brenner in the presentation of her report, how we got to this stage. But we've got to look at it at this stage. I initially thought, as a lot of people did, the information centre should be a standalone facility on the highway. That's not the case. It's a case of all these four aspects of this building, wherever it is built, that they can piggyback on each other and improve each other. As the figures have been said, our information centre, the numbers, are decreasing over time. People come to Swan Hill for the Pioneer Settlement. Everyone knows Swan Hill for the Pioneer Settlement. So by having people go there and having a building of this type in the area, but not in the settlement, I think it's a great asset because the Aboriginal cultural experience can piggyback off people going to the settlement. The information centre can give the people opportunities to see other areas within our municipality, making them stay here a lot longer. By building it inside the settlement, we're going to lose that grass area in there. You talk about people coming to visit the Pioneer Settlement. They need somewhere to, if they want to have a picnic lunch, they want to spend some time in the settlement, not actually sitting in the buildings. That's a great asset. We use it during our food and wine festival. We use it for a lot of other processes down at the Pioneer Settlement. We are restricting the Pioneer Settlement by closing it down with this building to make it just a Pioneer Settlement and not being able to use it for other facilities as well. The budget is mentioning this. If you're going to build this massive budget, which I think, I thank the federal government for the funding, there's $5 million, their $5 million towards it, now $5 million in round figures. If you restrict it to that, what happens? We don't get the ideal budget or the ideal building if we're a couple of thousand dollars short or $10,000 short. We're going to stifle it, we're going to make it restrictive. You're going to bring everyone down in size. You can't restrict the budget. I would have been prepared irrespective of where I'm in, if we're going to build this building, let's build it properly. Don't build it within the budget, because if we do that, we're limiting our exposure and what we can do. They've already said, in, I take on board the question I asked Ms Brenner earlier, the initial estimations were over budget now. So if we go back and say, within the budget, we are going to restrict this building. This is going to be a terrific thing for us, and I've got no issues with that at all. But let's do it properly. Let's not go down this line of building inside the settlement, restricting it to the budget. Let's build it where it should be, and that's in Option Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further speakers against the motion? Yes, councillor McPhee.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much. I'd like to thank Heather Green in particular for working so hard on this project and gaining the funding. It's a wonderful thing. However, times have changed since the original feasibility studies were done. Things have moved on, including coronavirus, a lot of stuff we couldn't have predicted. I definitely speak against the motion. I personally am against either of the sites within that vicinity. I think Swan Hill has suffered over years because Pioneer Settlement is our only attraction, and we would do ourselves great justice to have much more vision, just as the people who worked so hard to create the Pioneer Settlement did. And they had vision. They also established the art gallery, which was visionary. There are a lot of towns of our size who would give their right hand to have an art gallery because it ensures continued investment in the arts. It's actually funded by the federal government to the tune of $100,000 or the state. I'm not sure, $100,000, so we do get funding for that. Large, prominent art galleries such as Bendigo, such as Aubrey Wodonga, they do achieve high visitation rights in their own right. One of the big problems I have with this whole, the location situation, and my fellow councillors would have been bored senseless listening to me talk about this privately, is that we are restricting the growth of our art gallery into the future, and that will affect creativity in our region and visitation for the next, who knows, 80 years, because it's limited by the size of the site. The other, and certainly inside the Pioneer Settlement site and without it, it's also limited by its lack of a prominent location and the interaction of our own community. Tourists visit an art gallery, but one of the very important things is that it sustains creativity in the town, and it's a creative hub for the town. So we are losing those potentials, and that's disturbed me greatly. With incredible respect to the Wondara Action Committee and respect for their work and respect for their appreciation of being included in the process at this time, but I am very fearful that we will never again have the opportunity to have a civic building for the Aboriginal community of Swan Hill for use for their own cultural purposes, and the recommendation to co-locate an art gallery would seem to be a fantastic synergistic co-location as a facility. It would also be much used and much loved by the community of Swan Hill generally and the Aboriginal community if it was more accessible to them in a more central and affirming place. I shall like to, you know, give call-outs to the artists of our region, Lorraine Connolly Norby, Marilyn Nichols, Brendan Kennedy, Glenda Nichols, Sam Kirby, Esther Kirby, who are in the museum in Melbourne and the National Museum, just to name a few. These artists' work are held in museums, national and state, and they have no recognition in our town. And our new gallery does not actually dedicate a permanent gallery space for them. In fact, I'm sure most people in our region would be ignorant of their work. So I'm concerned that we have this one moment in time to choose, to create another attraction in our town, another community facility, and a place that would give another attraction. So we are over-capitalising the Pioneer Settlement site, in my opinion, by building a huge piece of infrastructure. I do understand that at its inception, it was a great idea because we didn't have other locations easily obtainable, but time has moved on. And I do fear that people will still arrive there and visit in the one day. It won't really increase visitation, because one, as a visitor, I think we all know, you do one thing on one day, you go home and F T, that's a good part, and then the next day you have another time to visit. I personally think this does not make good business sense. We're not putting our newest, biggest piece of investment in a prominent site where people will see. But I, like Les, have also been convinced that locating visitor information services at the Pioneer Settlement is a good idea. I didn't believe it, but now I see it. So I have been able to be convinced and changed my opinion. I'm also, so I would see a great merit in having a substantial visitor information centre and entrance to the Pioneer Settlement. It's overdue, it's needed, around the location of the Rose Garden, and us really using, going with the spirit of the times, when we have over 300 community people who have said they would support a cultural centre with an art gallery in a more central location, and that is a great energy to grab hold of. And I think that that's the way we should go. We are also, in this time of coronavirus, or COVID-19, domestic tourism, we hope, will go gangbusters. A lot of people will suffer financially, but there's going to be a lot of people who are looking to holiday in Australia. And whichever option we choose, we are going to turn our two biggest attractions into a building site for the next two and a half years. I don't think this makes good business sense. I think we would be better off to update our entrance to the Pioneer Settlement, incorporate visitor information services, and make sure we include that business hub for the WAC group and other people to engage in and formulate funding opportunities and business ideas to take advantage, and then take a big, deep breath, consult again and identify another location, because we are going to jeopardise some of our tourism opportunities in the next five years, because the experience people have is not going to be quite as wonderful as it could be now. We could be linking to the Silo Art Trail and Sea Lake, who surely are going to suffer with a lack of visitation from overseas visitors as well, and could do with, I think we could create a great marketing opportunity. The other thing is, I find that if distressing, as someone who always supported a cultural centre in a town that has the largest population of Aboriginal people, largest municipality in Victoria, that a project that started as a cultural centre has diminished so much to become a room. And I know it's about potentialities and possibilities. However, I find it, I find it not respectful enough. I am deeply concerned and find it hard to understand how a massive piece of infrastructure, yet we've reduced it so much. In fact, it's not progress. The Aboriginal community from the start of the Pioneer Settlement had involvement in education there. We're just returning back to that. And I hope and I wish the Wondara Action Committee all the best. And I certainly, in my time, will be holding the council to account that they are involved and the investment does continue. Not that we have any financial investment in that aspect so far. And there are risks in my case, but particularly in regard to the site inside the settlement. It is, the settlement was designed by Sir Roy Brown, who is a world famous Australian architect who designed the National Gallery of Victoria, which I think we'd all be familiar with. I wasn't aware that the settlement was laid out by him in particular, particular design and style, and his protege, Design Spoons and the Art Gallery. So this is actually a story in itself. In time, it will be a great story if left intact. And so I think the other aspect is that what we have down there is a riverine environment, full of cultural environmental heritage. And in time, the town will grow, and we will treasure that more if it was still able to maintain its naturalistic appeal, which putting a large, large building there will impact on that. And that will impact, it'll be in 50, 50 years' time when we, you know, our people who follow us, that they won't have that. There'll be plenty of built-up areas, but that is quite unique. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any further speakers?
Speaker against the motion, thank you, Mr Mayor. Certainly, this is not an easy decision to make. As much as I like the building and design of Option One, I just can't bring myself to support it in, given the nature of the amount of green space that it takes up in the Pioneer Settlement. And to me, that's been largely conveyed by the public and the community that have provided feedback, their thoughts around the intent, the design and the operation of the Pioneer Settlement. I do believe we need to do something, and I believe Option One or Two will work, but Option Two is my preference, and that is to enhance the services and bring some efficiencies and cost savings to the white payers while preserving the Pioneer Settlement and its open space. There have been a large degree of varying opinions regarding the Pioneer Settlement as a listed building. One side of the community are concerned at the amount of white payers' money that goes into running the Pioneer Settlement for little benefit to, as I say, their livelihood living in our municipality. Some say it is a great tourist attraction, and some say it, as in their words, is a waste of money. The other side of our community wants the Pioneer Settlement preserved as it is and returned to its former glory. A former glory that was won successfully with a large amount of volunteers providing activation at the Pioneer Settlement and community groups running special events by locals. We know in today's eyes that volunteers have dwindled, and it becomes more difficult to keep or to find and engage volunteers than any organisation that undertakes volunteering. Another side of the community sees the opportunity for Swan Hill to have a significant development occur within our township, having seen many opportunities in the past turned down and stagnating our municipality. Since bearing account of a constant comment that I hear is how Murrjua, Echuka, Shepparton have all grown and increased in their population and the services provided to their community. I have and continue to be for private development within our municipality, not at any cost, but strongly for it. Walking away from this, any opportunity down at the Pioneer Settlement with this building would just be another nail on the coffin of the opportunity for Swan Hill to grow. In regards to the Aboriginal experience being offered, included in part of the Our Place building, the Aboriginal experience is not meant to be a representation or a replacement of the Murrjua River Interpretive Centre identified within the Riverside Master Plan. That is still a future development for Swan Hill with good potential. The room allocated for the Aboriginal experience is to include the Aboriginal storytelling, the tours, the involvement that they already have at the Pioneer Settlement. And they have, since I was a kid and attended in primary school, they need to and rightly should be included in the building as part of the Pioneer Settlement, not in a separate building or disconnected from the main building. This is a step forward to reconciling with the local Aboriginal community. It is not the first step or the last step that we will be taking as a council. I support the continued work with the architects and the local Aboriginal community to maximise the size of the area within the building to benefit the purpose of the building and why we're building it within the constraints of our budget. Yeah, so, yeah, my preference, Mr Mayor, is Option Two. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnson. Do you want to close with a question, councillor Bennet?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just with regard to the Aboriginal community and the consultation that's been had, the Wondara Action Committee, and I'll quote from the letter that was received and all councillors have seen this afternoon. "The WAC is a body of traditional owners and families who have historical connections to this area. WAC are a working group in partnership with council through the Aboriginal Community Partnership Strategy. WAC supporting council to undertake reconciliation as an organisation and improve the way they do business with the local Aboriginal community." Now, this is the group that we've been working through, and they have highlighted that their connection to the river, rather than a central location, and that connection to Pentle Island is imperative to them. With regard to losing the green space, I agree, any loss of green space is a bad thing in this time, but there's always potential to open up more green space at the other end of the settlement when and if the train was to move down, and opening up the lawn space at Loll Marie Inn. With regard to the restricted budget, budgets are part of business. They're a part of all plans. Budgets allow you to put into place and plan properly within a set allocation. If it was a private enterprise project, we couldn't over-budget. If it was a personal project, you couldn't over-budget because you wouldn't have the extra funds there. I think it would be irresponsible of us to allow overspending in this motion. So with that, that is my closing argument, and my motion stands.
Thank you, councillor Bennet. Okay, we'll now move to a vote. All those in favour of the motion? Those against? The motion is carried.
Can I call for a division on that?
Certainly can. Those in favour of the motion? Read the names out, Mr Mayor. Okay.
Round and clear, please.
For the motion, councillor Young, councillor Bennet, councillor Johnson and myself, councillor Moore. Those against the motion? Councillor Jeffrey, councillor McPhee and councillor McKay. Okay. The motion is carried, as I said. That concludes business today. I declare the meeting closed at 2:19 PM.